It's been moved by Commissioner Towns, second by Commissioner Foreman, that we accept the agenda as presented. Those in favor of the motion will vote yes, those opposed vote no. Looks like carries, not on my screen, but motion carries unanimously. Next item is a public invited to be heard. If there is anyone who has an item that they wish to present to the commission tonight, that is not on tonight's agenda, now is the time to do so. If you do have anything you wish to present to the commission, you'll have a three-minute time limit, and when you come to the podium, give us your name and address, and there'll be a red light, yellow light, green light on the podium there. When you start your presentation, the clock will start. When you have 30 seconds left, the yellow light will come on, and after three minutes, the red light comes on. So don't look like anybody has anything they want to beat the feet up here. So we'll keep going on the agenda. The consent count, that's going to be taken care of next week at the next meeting? Okay. We'll move into the board action items. First item is the preliminary major subdivision of Water Valley South, subdivision 27th filing. Scott, you got the floor.
Thank you, Chairman. Bear with us for a second while we get the projector going.
Want to crank it up?
Could it just turn off?
Brown was looking at it in there.
Well, so much for technology. It's great when it works.
You want it done?
I think both of the applicants have the materials, and you have the materials. The only problem is the people at home that might be watching on TV or streaming, so...
Do we need to take five-minute recess to get it corrected, or...
We can try.
Okay. Why don't we do that, take five-minute recess?
Okay, thanks.
I don't know, just...
I don't know, we've been watching out, but sometimes it's turned everything off, and everything back on. Where else?
Yeah.
She turned on.
Probably about that long.
It's good.
He smoked that stuff. I mean, I had fifteen of them, and he said, "Are you on some more?" And I'm like, "Dang, I didn't have six." I mean, he smoked, you know, he thought it was too soft. You know, he's like, "I left it behind," and I had to get it, and I was like, "Oh, damn."
Yeah, I'll take some of that.
I'll bring you a couple. I restarted it, if that... You gonna try it? They can't. It's just kind of... At home, you know, that is weird.
Did it flash?
It was the voting. It was flashed. What's that?
Yes.
Really? Wonder who did that?
Sabotage.
I just acquired two tickets. First, I'm giving them to Alaska, so I'm selling them, or something. I have two tickets, although I can't find them.
There you go.
Thank you.
Oh, maybe. Good work.
We'll reconvene our meeting here and pick up where we left off there for board action item number one. Scott, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission. This is a preliminary major subdivision, Water Valley South subdivision 27th filing, also known as Pelican Shores. The subdivision's being reviewed in accordance with Article 4, Chapter 17 of the municipal code, which outlines the purposes of the major subdivision process. The site's located northeast of Seventh Street and New Liberty Road, directly north of the Good Samaritan facility that's currently under construction. The site's zoned residential mixed use, surrounded by other residential mixed use and other single-family detached home uses. The master plan for Water Valley South anticipated multifamily condominiums up to 226 dwelling units on little less than 20 acres. However, the proposed plat is quite a bit less dense than that master plan anticipated, and only includes 71 lots, 70 lots for patio homes and one lot for a clubhouse, and approximately eight acres of common open tracks, landscaping, open space, drives, and utility corridors. So this is the preliminary plat showing the layout. The north is to the right-hand side of the slide. Seventh Street is on the top of the slide, and the lake that the project fronts on is to the bottom of the slide. The application is consistent with the following goals and objectives of the comp plan, the growth framework, maintaining the character of the community while accommodating future growth that is fiscally and environmentally responsible, and also the residential areas framework regarding support diverse housing and residential neighborhoods to meet varying family sizes, lifestyles, and income levels. Notification went out in accordance with the municipal code and was published in the newspaper in accordance with this, or as you can see in the map of the notification area. Staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the preliminary major subdivision as presented, subject to all remaining planning commission and staff comments being addressed in the final subdivision application. Staff requests that the following be entered into the record, the application and supplemental materials, staff memorandum, and supporting documents, and the recommendation. I should also point out that the applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting a few weeks ago. I believe there were only about three people in attendance, and there weren't any concerns that were voiced. They were more curiosity about the project itself. So with that, I'll answer any questions. The applicant is present. I believe they also have a presentation that they'd like to show the planning commission, and with that, I'll try to redo.
Have a presentation.
Thank you, Scott and Planning Commission, Chairperson. My name's Brian Williamson, I'm with TST Consulting Engineers. We are the engineer and planner on the project, and I just have a little bit to add to what Scott showed you. He went over all the basics. We just have a little bit of additional information to add for that. Here's just the same plan that Scott was showing. North is to the right, the lake down at the bottom, Seventh and New Liberty Roundabout shown there. Just a rendered plan that you can see. One thing that sets this off from other subdivisions is that these are lots, but they're not attached to the right-of-way. It's a patio home product, so all the common space around the buildings will be maintained by a sub HOA there. So the driveways are attached to the right-of-way, there's all access easements for those. Just running over the numbers that Scott talked about, there's 54 interior lots, the range, they're a little under 4,000 square feet. They have an 84-foot depth and a 44-foot width. There are 16 lakefront lots that are a little larger, about 5,500 square feet, and they're kind of oddly shaped. They're 85 feet on one side, 116 on the other, with a width of 54 feet. Then there's one clubhouse lot that is all the way at the north, you can see kind of in the center of the plan there, that will have a clubhouse, and then will be spilling out into some of that metro district property that's on the north with some amenities. The open space is a little misleading on this, so I just wanted to break down how it is. There's about six, almost seven acres of actual landscape area, and then some of that open space area is the driveways, because they're in that common tract as well. So just want to make the distinguishing, distinguish those two separate areas, since it's a little non-standard. The other thing that we wanted to talk about was that, because this is not a standard RMU subdivision, we just wanted to compare the density and then what that lot coverage would be. So you can see that the proposed average lot is 41-41, so a little over 4,000 square feet. RMU has a 6,000-square-foot standard. The total area is different, but the net density over the site is the same, still right around four dwellings per acre. You can see that there's just a reduction in the lot coverage there, but we're not putting a whole bunch of extra lots in because they're small lots. We're still kind of meeting the intent of that size and density there that's in the RMU. These are the floor plans for the interior lots, so they go on that 44-by-84-foot depth. So there's a variety of plans, and then they can be flip-flopped, kind of mirrored, to change the patio orientation and driveway orientation. These are the floor plans for the larger lots. You can see that diagonal lot line in the bottom there kind of shows those two different lot sizes on the right and the left there. Again, these could flip-flop a little bit, not as much, there's a couple, because of the diagonal, they're kind of tied into the orientation. These show kind of how those floor plans fit on the lots. You notice that the floor plans are about four feet less than the lot width, so on the smaller products, it's a 40-foot building and then a 44-foot lot width, and then we have eight feet in between the lots. So that gives us 12 feet in between the buildings. Some of the products that are done similar to this go right up to that building envelope, and there's a lot of, you know, if your survey is a little bit off when you're staking the foundation, you just get into this, you know, 10-feet building separation without fire-rated walls. We're just trying to allow a little bit of flexibility there, so, you know, we're not running into window wells or anything like that coming outside of that building envelope. There won't be window wells, because there's no basements in this product, but things like that, air-conditioning units, things like that. And I'm happy to go over any more details of those kind of odd lot shapes. These are some elevations of what the interior lots and lake lots will look like. The lake lot on the right will focus kind of that big patio out with those views to the lake, covered, outdoor kitchen, and then the interior lots have a small courtyard in the front, and then they have either back to the open space or to Seventh, which has a landscape berm back there buffering between the street and the lots. That's all we have. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have, or address any concerns.
Thank you. Any questions come?
I just have one quick question. Is the access up Seventh Street, is that going to be a right-in, right-out?
That's correct. It's a right-in, right-out, yeah.
Any other questions from the commission? Mr. Chair? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just, we're finally not going to have any more rodeos over there.
No, we're still having these.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the preliminary major subdivision as presented by staff, following all addressed, final major subdivision plot questions.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Towns, second by Commissioner Foreman, that we approve the preliminary major subdivision as presented, and make sure that all staff comments are addressed in the final major subdivision plat. Those in favor of the motion will vote yes, those opposed vote no. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our next item, we will close our regular meeting, open up a public hearing for a height review, Great Western Industrial Park subdivision, fourth filing, Lot 1, Block 1. Scott, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission. I'm taking this item for Paul tonight, as he's traveling back from the American Planning Association conference. This is a height review in accordance with the municipal code, Section 161050, regarding modification of building heights. The property is located in Great Western Industrial Park, fourth filing, Lot 1, on the north side of Eastman Park Drive, northeast corner of Eastman Park Drive and Great Western Drive, just to the northwest of Owens, Illinois. Subject property is zoned heavy industrial, as is the rest of the park in this vicinity. The building is, as you can see by the illustration, is for a business named Intersand, and that site plan has not been before you yet, the reason being the height review is necessary to proceed with their planning, so this is preceding the site plan. These are the north and south elevations, and the required shadow study. The height modification process in the code requires the shadow study to see how the shadows will impact neighboring properties. Obviously, there are no residential neighbors in this area, and the shadows will actually have very little impact on any of the neighboring properties. And these are at the summer and winter solstice. The height modification section of the code, 161050C2, strives to preserve views or not negatively impact neighboring properties from a view shed standpoint, or from a light and shadow standpoint, or from privacy, or from a neighborhood scale. And not included on this slide is the neighboring properties in Great Western Industrial Park, just for a reference point. The Owens, Illinois, building that was, went through the site plan process and incorporated Weld County, and then was annexed to the town. It is 150 feet tall at its peak, and then we had a couple of other height modifications for properties in the park that went through Windsor's process, including Halliburton, which has, I believe exceeds 119 feet tall for some of their facilities, and then the Front Range Energy Silo on the property is 147 feet tall. So there are several structures in the neighborhood that are of similar scale. I guess one other reference that we thought we'd throw in there was, if you're familiar with the water tanks out by Walmart Distribution Center on Crossroads Boulevard, those water tanks are approximately 158 feet tall, so... Again, the growth framework, Chapter 5B of the comprehensive plan says, "Maintain the character of the community while accommodating future growth that is fiscally and environmentally responsible." Staff recommends that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval of the height modification to the town board for the proposed height not to exceed 140 feet. Staff requests that the following be entered into the record, the application of supplemental materials, the staff memo and supporting documents, any testimony received during the public hearing, and the recommendation. And again, these are the approval criteria, and the applicant is present. If there are any questions for the applicant before the public hearing is closed.
Since this is the public hearing portion of the process, is there anyone in the audience that has any questions or comments pertaining to this?
Mr. Chair, if I may.
David.
Sorry, but for the public hearing record, I do want to put the commission on notice that for the record, I need to disclose I am a sitting member of the town board. I'm here, however, as a liaison to the planning commission. While I'm present here, I'm not giving my opinion or participating in discussion. I will not let tonight's proceedings influence or affect my review of this matter if and when it comes before the town board. I'll make my decision at the town board level based solely on the evidence presented during the town board public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anybody have any comments, questions pertaining to this agenda item? Should not be entertained, a motion to close the public hearing. Second. Been moved by Commissioner Towns, second by Commissioner Dennison, that we close the public hearing. Those in favor of the motion will vote yes, those opposed vote no. And the motion carries unanimously. We'll reconvene our regular meeting, move to the next agenda item, which is a recommendation to the town board for the height review, Great Western Industrial Park subdivision, fourth filing. Anything further, Scott?
Nothing unless there are any questions.
Okay. Does the applicant have any information they want to present?
Thank you. I'm Dean Brown, the Vice President of Industrial for Borough Real Estate, and I think that the project as presented is a good project for the community. We evaluated the existing infrastructure in the area, and really think that the use fits what's out there. I think with Scott referenced, most all the facilities in the area that have the height, we are adjacent to, as he said, Owens, Illinois, which is 175 or 150-some feet tall. I think it's a great fit for the area, and I really don't see any impacts. I think the opportunity here is a good one for the community, and we just hope that you all see the opportunity here also. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, based on the zoning there and the requirement that you're asking for, I don't see an issue with this. Any comments, questions from the commission?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Why was the maximum height set for 75 feet originally, if we're making all these...
Weren't you at that meeting?
No.
So, if I could...
Please.
The 75-foot height limitation in the industrial zones has been in the municipal code since the early '70s, and as you know, we're working on a code update with the attrition and the staff in the planning department, and the, the project's taking a little longer than we had hoped, but the height in the, in the industrial zones is something that we would probably raise to avoid having to go through a height modification every time, if the heavy industrial zone is already seeing that height, so...
It's probably because we didn't know all the uses that were going to come in there soon. Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chair, I move that we forward a recommendation to the town board for the proposed height not to exceed 140 feet.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Towns, second by Commissioner Foreman, that we forward a recommendation of approval to the town board for the proposed height to not exceed 140 feet. Those in favor of the motion will vote yes, those opposed vote no. And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Judication from Planning Commission. Anything? Nothing.
Nothing.
No communications.
Nothing.
Nothing.
Not a, not a, not a.
Not a, not a.
Town board liaison, David, do you have anything?
I'm searching, sir, and I can't find anything to report.
Oh, my God. Wow. All right, I think Scott's going to take up a little time there.
Not a whole lot. We do have the three site plan items that are in the communications section of the packet. If you have any questions or comments about those, please forward those on to staff. Thanks to those of you that could attend the Monday night building code and contractor licensing work session with town board, so I'm following up with Safe Built to get answers to the four or five questions that were outstanding from Monday night. We'll be reaching out to the HBA and the builder, building community to let them know the direction we're headed, and then we'll be scheduling a public hearing for town board and move forward with that. So we'll definitely report back the direction that we've, or the research regarding those questions that were outstanding. And then just wanted to point out the upcoming meeting dates. The May 6th joint meeting with the town board is for the transportation master plan kickoff meeting, so that's, we're in the data collection and compilation portion of that project right now. The firm of Farr and Pierce and Fox Tuttel Hernandez is working on that project, but there will be a kickoff meeting with town board, planning commission.
The seventy-five-foot height limitation in the industrial zones has been in the Municipal Code since the early seventies. And as you know, we're working on a code update with the attrition and the staff in the planning department and the, the, the project's taking a little longer than we had hoped, but the height in the, in the industrial zones is something that we would probably raise to avoid having to go through a height modification every time if the heavy industrial zone is already seeing that height, so...
It's probably because we didn't know all the old uses that were going to come in there soon. Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chair, I move that we forward a recommendation, approve the town board for the proposed height not to exceed a hundred and forty feet.
Second? It's been moved by Commissioner Towns, second by Commissioner Foreman, that we forward a recommendation of approval to the town board for the proposed height to not exceed one hundred and forty feet. Those in favor of the motion will vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Judication from Planning Commission. Any, I mean, nothing? Carry.
General communications.
Nothing.
Nothing.
On board liaison, David, you have anything?
I'm, I'm searching, sir, and I can't find anything to report.
However, I think Scott's going to take up a little time there.
Not a whole lot. We do have the three site plan items that are in the communications section of the packet. If you have any questions or comments about those, please forward those on to staff. Thanks to those of you that could attend the Monday night Building Code and Contractor Licensing work session with town board. So I'm following up with Safe Built to get answers to the four or five questions that were outstanding from Monday night. We'll be reaching out to the HBA and the builder, building community to let them know the direction we're headed, and then we'll be scheduling a public hearing before town board and move forward with that. So we'll definitely report back the direction that we've, or the research regarding those questions that were outstanding. And then just wanted to point out the upcoming meeting dates. The May sixth joint meeting with the town board is for the transportation master plan kickoff meeting. So that's, we're in the data collection and compilation portion of that project right now. The firm of Farr and Hears and Fox Tuttle Hernandez is working on that project, but there will be a kickoff meeting with town board, planning commission, and Parks Board that evening. Parks Board, because this is a holistic transportation master plan that includes bikes, pedestrians, transit, all modes of travel. And then that same topic will be a fun event that we'll be having at the first concert in the park on June sixth, rolling it out for the public to have their, we really want to stress public outreach for the transportation master plan, get as much public feedback and input as we can, because that'll help inform the recommendations that will go into the capital improvement budget when town board is talking budget in August, so... Just wanted to throw those dates out so that May sixth and June sixth, there'll be some events that you can plan on attending, so... That's all I have.
Also, the appreciation dinner, that's the thirtieth?
Thirty.
So if you haven't given your RSVP, please do so.
My question is, did I?
You think that six o'clock's going to hold up this time, or...?
You know, I don't control the future meetings. Sometimes town board may have another item come up that needs to be plugged in to those future meetings, but I think the appreciation dinner at the Red Barn, that's pretty much set. That won't change.
What, are you having a garage sale over here, or...?
Kelly's doing work in there.
We done? We are joined.
Yeah, May sixth is a joint appreciation meeting. With Farr and Hears, the kickoff meeting. And then I...